Six o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Select Board to order for December 4, 2023. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a list of public service announcements tonight. Virginia, do you want to go through those?
Okay, so first up, we have the holiday gift stroll, which will be happening on Saturday, December 9, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. in Chelmsford Center. There will be free gift wrapping available to shoppers during the event. And if you have any questions, you can contact Lisa Maroni at LMaroni@ChelmsfordMA.gov or 978-244-3303. And there will be a public input session on December 5 at 7:00 p.m. for Freeman Lake. The town is performing a comprehensive lake study regarding Freeman Lake management. This is the first public input session, and the meeting will be again at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 5 in room 205 at the town offices. If you're not able to attend in person, there is a quick survey available online and through the announcement in this meeting packet that only takes a couple minutes to complete. It's just a one-page survey. If you have any questions, you can email stormwater@chelmsfordma.gov or call 978-250-5228 extension 5235.
Did you skip over Neshoba?
Oh, I have that next. Sorry, I just have these out of order.
Oh, okay.
That's my error. Okay. Next up, we have the Town of Chelmsford Public Notice for the Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee Appointment. The Select Board and the School Committee will meet on December 11, 2023, to appoint one representative to the Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee to fill an unexpired three-year term from January 1, 2024, through March 31, 2025. If the current alternate is appointed as a full member, one alternate member will also be appointed to fill an unexpired term from January 1, 2024, through March 31, 2025. Applications are available on the Town of Chelmsford website. Applications should be forwarded to the Town Manager's Office at 50 Billrica Road by 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, December 6. Okay, and the Lowell Regional Transit Authority is sponsoring a Try Transit Month for the entire month of December. You can ride for free on all LRTA buses and Roadrunner vehicles. So if you'd like to experience the benefits of public transportation, the LRTA encourages you to take advantage of that. Next up, we have a public notice regarding the Spring 2024 Annual Town Meeting. The Town of Chelmsford will convene the 2024 Spring Town Meeting on Monday, April 29, 2024. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted to the Office of the Town Manager at 50 Billrica Road prior to 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 2, 2024. Petitioned articles must carry the signatures of at least 10 voters. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202. Next up, we have Sober Karaoke, which has free admission every Friday. I'm sorry, it's not in my packet here. I just have to change my glasses. Every second Friday of the month from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts in the Cabaret Room. Thank you. Okay, and the Chelmsford Health Department is sponsoring Save a Life Free Narcan Training. The next session will be December 5 from 10:00 to 10:30 a.m. or 6:00 to 6:30 p.m. at the Chelmsford Town Hall Fire Department Training Room in the lower level. You can register at www.chelmsfordma.gov, and registration is required because there's limited space. You can also call the Chelmsford Health Department directly at 978-250-5241. The Health Department is sponsoring Free Residential Medical Sharps disposal. The four drop-off dates that are scheduled in the coming year are this month on December 11, 2023, April 8, 2024, September 9, 2024, and December 9, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You need to complete a one-time registration required to drop off sharps. This is for residential sharps only, and they must be in approved containers. The Health Department is sponsoring a hands-only CPR learning session and Narcan training to avoid opioid overdose. You can learn how to save a life in just a few minutes. The training will be conducted December 19, 2023, at the Chelmsford Library in the McCarthy Meeting Room. It will be conducted from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with training sessions every 15 minutes over the course of those two hours. The training is for learning purposes only. I do not believe there's a CPR certification with that. Okay, next up, we have the Chelmsford Secret Santa Program. If you'd like to help a family in need this holiday season, please contact Robin Knox. Her email address is robinknox6360@gmail.com or you can call Robin at 978-259-8396. This program supports over 200 Chelmsford children this year, and all contacts and information is kept strictly confidential. And next up, we have the gift card donation opportunity with our Community Services Coordinator, Jen Malanson. If you could consider donating a gift card to be used to help Chelmsford residents in need throughout the year, gift cards can be purchased in any denomination, either to Walmart, Market Basket, Hanaford, or Target, and dropped off or mailed to the Community Services Coordinator. She is at 50 Billrica Road in room LL04, or you can call Jen at 978-254-0446, or email jmalanson@chelmsfordma.gov. And Jen uses these gift cards all year long to purchase needed items for individuals and families.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're at the public input part of our meeting. Is there anybody that would like to address the board on any topic this evening that's not otherwise listed on the agenda? Does anybody?
I'm not on the Zoom either.
Okay, apparently we're all set there, so we'll go right to committee vacancies.
Okay, we have the following committee vacancies available. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term. The Board of Appeals has an associate member for one one-year term. The Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has one unexpired three-year term available. The Commission on Disabilities has two unexpired three-year terms, one unexpired three-year term, and one three-year term. The Community Action Program Committee has one unexpired term available. The Council on Aging has two vacancies, one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. The Cultural Council has two three-year terms open. The Historic District Commission has one unexpired three-year term. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one unexpired one-year term. The Parade Committee welcomes all applicants for one-year terms. The Roberts Field Advisory Committee has two unexpired three-year terms available, and the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term. If you are interested in serving on a town board or committee, you can complete an online application available on the town website. And for more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202 or tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're at the licenses. The first license for discussion this evening is for Masala Cafe on Littleton Road. Okay, if you want to come up to the podium and identify yourself and tell us a little bit about your restaurant.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. This is Lokesh Babu Mohan. I plan to open an authentic South Indian restaurant, which can provide an Indian flavored and with a good aroma of Indian food.
Okay, and your location is on Littleton Road?
Yeah, 313 Littleton Road, Unit 12, Chelmsford, 0124.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
It's been a longstanding location for Indian restaurants.
Yes, it is.
People watching, they're familiar with where you are.
I was just curious what attracted you to this location in Chelmsford?
Previously, I was running a restaurant when I was staying in Wesboro in the Route 9. And we moved to Chelmsford during the COVID period. We got a house and moved here. So from that time, I was looking for the restaurant, and this was the place which I got recently.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the Common Vigiler License for Sri Thirumal Chakra Foods LLC, doing business as Masala Cafe Chatinade at 313 Littleton Road, Unit 12, as presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and we'll be looking for an opening. Okay, next up is a one-day all-alcohol beverages license for St. John the Evangelist African Community at St. Mary's Parish. Is there anybody here for this application? Okay, I know this has happened before, so. Anybody have any questions that were not answered in the application?
I will make a motion to approve the one-day all-alcoholic beverages license for St. John the Evangelist African Community at St. Mary's Parish Hall at 25 North Road for December 17, 2023, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You have a question, George, or are you already voting? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, George. Okay, 4-0. All right, next up, another one-day beer and wine license for the Chelmsford Public Library, room 1214. And we do have somebody here to talk to us about this.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Leslie Kimball, the library director, and this is for an event that has happened before. The Chelmsford Art Society is having their reception in our McCarthy Meeting Room, and traditionally, they serve wine with art.
Anybody have any questions about this event?
I will make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license for the Chelmsford Public Library at 25 Boston Road on December 14, 2023, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Set there. Okay, next we have. Okay, are you with Canissa?
Yes. Thank you. David Kell, on behalf of Canissa, I just want to give you folks an update. This time last year, we were approved with a pocket license. We are the construction on 133 Princeton Street, which is going on right now. I want to give you an update as to where we are, why there's been some delays, and the explanation for all of it. But just a brief history, last December, our license was approved. We carried it forward. In about March or April, we received the final architectural designs, which went out for bid on the particular project. Then at about May or June, we solicited a couple builders to look at the project, come up with our prices, get our quotes and things. The builder that we've selected is here right now. It's not Senate anymore. Excuse me, it's now MTL Construction. And as we were going through the final designs of it, we realized that there was just a professional disconnect between the architect and the builder from the point of view of what the expectations were in the design of the project. We then had to go into a redesign mode. At that stage of the game, we were in the summer. Again, we wanted to show our commitment to the town and the project. We decided at that stage of the game to actually tear that structure down. And we tore the structure down with, not the blessing of the building inspector, but with the guidance of the building inspector. We got the fences all up. We finally got the eyesore down, which we knew that the neighbors wanted down for many years. We also had the building department out there to make sure that there wasn't any runoff or anything of that nature that could affect because we are near a body of water there. We got that all approved. We then went from a particular design, the actual site in and of itself, the structure that it's going to be sitting, we went from a two-story back to a one-story, where we had a basement. The price and the cost of it, and then the factoring that we were slightly in a flood zone, created some issues. We had to then go back to the drawing board. It looks now like we're going to be going back to the two-story structure which we originally had. We're redesigning that now. In addition, we're also getting additional quotes and final bids on all of that. So the delay has been just administrative. We're doing the best we can. We wanted to tear it down just to show you that our commitment to the project. We are aware that we do have a pocket license. We're going to need that for at least one more year. We're very close to the final bidding on the actual cost of the project, and we're out with at least four, maybe five different lenders for purposes of financing.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this project?
I guess the question I'd have is, when your license, it's shown on the screen, if you were here a year ago, the vision and the submittal to the ABCC was to have alcohol stored in the basement and the second floor levels for storage. It's unclear to us at this point if that will require a modification of that license to the ABCC. I don't know where it's. We know if it was an existing establishment, they would require a modification. But where it's a pocket license, I just want to raise to the board and to you that it may require a modification of the license.
Well, Paul, with that, my question was, do we require a modification to the license locally?
Yeah, as well.
I would think, yeah, because it's, you know, I mean, to me, that's significantly different.
Right. If the plan and the layout and everything is different, we approved all that as part of the initial license that you received.
The layout is not different. We're actually back to the original with the second floor. The storage that we discussed was the basement in the back and the second floor.
Right.
And there was a discussion at the time as to whether or not the second floor possibly could evolve into something else. It does not appear that that is anything that's going to be happening now from the point of view of wine tastings.
Did we not approve a package in the license that included the basement?
Yes.
As well as the first floor and the second floor?
Well, the first floor is retail, yes, and there was the basement, the back portion of it was a basement, is that correct? Yes, the back portion, excuse me, was the basement and the second floor, yes. But that was approved by the planning board, that's correct.
Well, and by us.
No, but I'm saying, when we approve the alcohol license, we approve a package which includes information the applicant has to provide, and that includes the plans for the building itself, which included at that time a basement, a first floor, and a second floor.
Okay.
Which is why we're asking, even locally, do we need to approve a new license? Because the license that you want to carry over for another year is actually, it's not a straight carryover from the package that we approved, is what I'm saying.
I don't think the building structure in it of itself has changed that would invoke that, but I most certainly am hearing what you're saying, and I will work with the ABCC to make that determination and the Town Manager to make that determination, and we could come back with an answer for you on that.
Do we only get triggered if the ABC gets triggered, ABCC gets triggered, or do we have our own set of rules and regulations where we need another local approval?
Our rules and regulations align with the ABCC because the issuance of a license has to be approved locally and at the state level. Our thinking is, and talking to Christina Bruce, who handles this daily for the town, is there's a modification even to the first floor because it was noted in your update that you're changing the portions of the layout of the first floor in terms of relocating the elevator, the private rooms, the tasting bar has been removed, the break room has been removed, the utility clause, and so it appears to us that there would be a modification needed to the license. So the license can be renewed, but it's going to have to be, we believe, and we have not heard from the ABCC, because this is not a typical modification to an existing license that's an operational, but we believe that they'll have to, may have to modify the license.
And what's the timeframe that you think that we would be able to get some feedback? Like, would it happen by the end of January?
Oh, yeah, certainly, yeah. And the modification process isn't complicated, isn't complex. It just has to be done because what will happen is if the board approves it and the ABCC comes out and examines it, if it's, like you said, if there's a disconnect between what was approved and what exists, then that could cause a problem. So you're right, there's a local issue and there's a state issue.
Fundamentally, I mean, what I'm trying to understand too is, so we have, as part of our agenda, to renew the annual licenses, right? So for this one in particular, should we be renewing it till the end of January so that we come back and revisit whether it has to be modified, or do we renew it for a year and then by virtue of the process, if it needs to be modified, they'll be back here in front of us?
My thinking would be, and welcome their thoughts, is given that the license is usually a condition of financing and approval, would be to approve the license renewal, but clearly before they would receive occupancy and change, they'd have to modify the license so that way it doesn't hinder them from progressing with financing and construction, but it makes it real clear that they are going to have to modify their license well in advance of the opening so that they don't have a problem getting occupancy for that license.
Because having the license itself is the major trigger for purposes of the financing and the construction costs.
And I'm not sure a one-month license would be of any value to them.
I mean, I guess I would ask that you keep us regularly updated, like maybe every three months or so, to come in and tell us where things are going, because, I mean, a one-year pocket license is unusual for us, quite frankly. I can't remember us ever doing one for.
And this would be almost, this could be almost two years.
Yes, right.
No, no, we'd be happy to keep you updated on a monthly basis. That's how close we are now with the design and the bidding and the structures and the finance and things of that nature. So, I mean, whether it be through the Board of Selectmen directly or the Town Manager, we would be happy to provide you with updates and whatever information you need. And I'll also be reaching out to the ABCCC and working with Paul to make a determination as to whether or not something is triggered, where we do have to get a modification of that license. Most certainly, we'll work with you. Most certainly, we'll comply with whatever needs to be complied with.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, concerns with this?
No, I don't.
The positive news is we have torn that building down.
That is positive news. We are so glad to see that. If nothing else comes out of this, that is a positive.
And the neighborhood is excited for it, so we're happy to have done that for you.
Okay, well, appreciate you coming in and giving us the update. And, yeah, we would like to be, you know, kept up to speed on what's happening, so.
And I would like to add, we continue to appreciate the support that not only this board, but the Planning Board and the Conservation Board has given us. We have been extremely well-received, and we very much appreciate it, and we look forward to putting a building there that this town will be very proud of.
And we've heard that the folks in North Chelmsford are waiting to buy that.
Absolutely.
Beer and wine and everything.
Best wine in town, but I can't advertise from this microphone, that's for sure.
Okay, I guess that's all we have for this evening then for you.
Do you want to take care of the vote when we do the total?
Yeah.
So we'll just wait for the final vote?
Sure.
Yeah, it'll be included in everything else. Okay, thank you. All right, and next up is our annual license renewals. So Virginia, do you want to read them all?
No.
No.
No. I guess let me just, before, does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
I like the recap that we get with this about what's happened through the year. That's very helpful.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the annual license renewals for alcohol, common vigiler, and auto dealer licenses for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the continuation of our Tax Classification Public Hearing. I know our assessor is here. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to our last presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a add from my previous presentation. I know you all received the spreadsheet that I sent to Virginia that was eventually circulated throughout. Any questions regarding that?
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Frank?
No.
George, Aaron? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board about tax classification this evening?
There's no one on the Zoom.
Okay, we have somebody coming from the audience, I think.
You, you. Did you raise your hand?
He did.
If you want to, John.
John Harrington, Executive Director of the Chefset Business Association. I'm a little nervous because I haven't done this.
Ever.
In a year.
For about, since 1990, we've been four different boards talking about classification. And bottom line is, the business community would like to eliminate classification if we could. It was for a number of years, we were parity with the tax rate in this town, and we would like to sometime, if not tonight, go back to that. And when I say that is, the business community, and a lot of residents probably do not know this, we do pay a lot in other fees. For a quick example, Stormwater, I have a piece of property right in Chelmsford Center, and the driveway or the alleyway is much smaller and less than my house driveway. But however, how much we're taxed on the commercial is about four times than what we would do, what my residents would be taxed. That's just one small example. And there's many other examples as far as different fees that the business community ends up with. It probably doesn't show at first, but they're in the money that we pay this town. And we do pay our fair share, in our opinion. And, yeah, COVID was a problem. It was a big problem with the businesses. We lost members. They went out of business. And they're struggling. Now, I'm not talking about, we're a lot of mom-and-pop stores, bottom line. I think Mr. Dixon would know that. Class of '64 guy, he'd know that. But in all reality, it's something that we would like the board to take a good look at, and hopefully, we can do something positive this year. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on this topic? And there's still nobody on Zoom? Okay. All right, so take a motion to close public hearing.
I will make a motion to close the Tax Classification Public Hearing.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close public. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
With zero? Okay, so now we have to have our discussion and decide on what we want to do with, as far as tax classification. Anybody want to start? George, you want to start? You don't have to. Aaron, you want to start?
I'm curious to hear what you guys have to say.
Virginia, do you want to start?
Sure.
I mean, I will, but go ahead.
So, um, if I, if you look at the assessor's presentation on slide nine, it shows how the residential and the CIP levy shares have changed since we had the split in place. And, um, at one point, the residential share was down to 78, but for the most part, it's been hovering around 81 to 82. Um, so 2024, if you maintain the 1.2 split, it's at 81.58. If you look at slide 11, if you want to get it, if you want to keep the residential CIP share similar to where it was last year, you would actually increase the split to 1.21. And if you wanted to get it to the point where it was closer to previous years, it would be even higher than 1.21. So, uh, with the residential property rates going up at a rate that's higher than the commercial share, I would be inclined to leave it where it is, again, at the 1.2. I appreciate the extra fees and things that the businesses pay. I think they also have the benefit of the, they still have the benefit of the federal corporate break on taxes. And I think that the increase that they've seen in the last few years has already been levied onto their customer and client community. And it's not like the customers and clients will get that back. So I just feel like rather than disturbing the apple cart on either side, it would, it would be reasonable to just leave it at the 1.2, which puts a little bit more burden on the resident's side, but, um, from previous years. But it's still in the ballpark of where we've been. That's my thought.
Okay, um, I'm kind of of the opposite opinion. As I, as I've said every year, I kind of make the same points every year, so I'll keep that part of it brief. But I, I do support the businesses, I think, and I, because they support the town. As Mr. Harrington mentioned, there are many, many small businesses in town. And yes, some of them can pass along some of their extra expenses to their customers, but a lot of them don't. And I respect them for that and I thank them for that. They are subject to other, um, fees that, that the rest of us aren't. Like, uh, you know, not only stormwater fees, personal property fees, which I think is really a misnomer, but it, because it applies to the business equipment basically that they pay a tax on. Um, they, they help the town. Uh, if you, if you go through the, the center or Drum Hill or Vinyl Square, you'll see banners for the parade committee that the businesses generally are there to support. They sponsor them. Without that, those funds, the, the parade would not be near what it is every year. So I give them a lot of credit for that. Um, they just are, I think are so out front in helping the residents, helping the other businesses, contributing to sports teams. Um, I, I mean, it, in, in today's paper, there was a, an article about the, the one, um, uh, program that the, one of our tow companies is doing, um, to provide free toes for people who are unable, who feel that they're unable to drive home, which I think is, is truly amazing. Um, you know, we've, we wouldn't have that if that person was not a, a business owner in, in, in Chelmsford. And as, as has been noted, the, the residential, um, percentage is increasing while the business percentage of our assessments is, is going down. And if, you know, if we try to keep it kind of on an even keel, in my mind, that, that's a disservice to the businesses. So I, I would support lowering it to some extent. I mean, we, you know, we can't bring it down to, to, uh, you know, one to one as it was several years ago. But, um, I would support lowering it to 1.18 or something like that.
Right.
Yes.
How many small, uh, how many businesses are, are under the small business exemption?
Yeah, Frank, they can't, they, they can't hear you. You got to get to the microphone. They can't hear you. They'll be at home to hear you.
Excuse me. All right, 262.
262. And how many are in the, how many, how many businesses?
How many all, all together?
Yeah.
Four, 450, 500? A good percentage from our, um.
About half.
Yeah. Qualified for the small commercial, exactly. Let's do largely do the, um, how many commercial condominiums we have, courthouse and the like.
And what's the CBA membership?
I don't know that that's.
Sure it is. It's a, it's a representative, they, they, the CBA comes here and says, we represent the businesses in town. So I'd just like to know how many of those businesses are represented by the CBA.
Well, public hearing is closed. I, I don't think that's.
I think the CBA would have to answer that, yeah, that would have to be public.
Got him here.
Johnny, you ready to answer that?
I didn't really hear you speak.
I just wanted to know what your current membership is. How many members? Well, that's, that tells me something right there if you're going to be evasive in answering the question.
Okay, okay, we don't need to, to, okay. All right, so George, if you want to finish, thank you. All right.
I, I got my information, just, uh.
In regards to that, uh, question, my president feels that that's a, a number that we kind of keep dear to our hearts. However, we have a certain membership, a good membership. Uh, we lost a lot during the COVID tragedy, I should say. Uh, but we represent all businesses in town, whether they're a member or not. I mean, there's some businesses out there that really can't afford the dues, we'll say. And, uh, that doesn't stop us. We represent them.
Okay, the, the public hearing is over, so thank you, thank you for that information.
Very good.
So George, do you have any thoughts on what you?
No, I, I think, I, I agree with, honestly, I agree with, uh, Virginia that we should just leave it as it is for this year and see what happens. I think, I think the people in, I've had 100 phone calls from people who can't afford to pay the taxes. And what can I tell you? I mean, uh, and I haven't got any calls from the business association, but that doesn't surprise me either.
Okay.
It's a difficult issue.
I would agree that I would, we would keep it just as it is. Actually, we're reducing it by a shot percentage is, um, minimal, but, so. And out of that, out of the difference, out of the difference, Frank, the people, the small business exemption and the others, I mean, what is, how many of them are real larger, larger companies that pay a big part of that? You know what I mean, the, uh?
You mean like of the 250 or so?
They're larger companies that pay.
Of those that qualify, they have to, it's less than a million dollar valuation. That's one of the.
On the small business?
Small, small.
I mean, I'm talking about over that now, all the.
The ones that don't qualify.
That don't qualify? There are not that many, um, commercial buildings that are as high valued as people think. Fully two-thirds of, um, of our base is probably a million dollars or less. We do have the, you know, the Apollo Drives of the world and all that, but they don't make up the lion's share. It is, you know, the, the smaller, lesser valued, if you will.
All right. Thank you. I, I still think we should just leave it alone. That's my opinion. It's, you know.
Okay, Aaron?
So I generally agree. In, in theory, I agree very much with the things that you said. In theory, I would like to bump it down, but I think the real estate market has been volatile for a few years. And I think the residents are, I mean, everybody's taken a hit. The businesses have taken a hit too. Everybody's taken a hit. But I'd have a hard time, I'd have a hard time bumping it down right now, knowing what that would do to the residential property owners. I don't know if this is the year. I think maybe as the real estate prices kind of level out in the following year or two, I think that would be, I'd be more apt to try and bump that down a little bit.
As, as John, Mr. Harrington said, if you think that in the future, there'd be a way to, maybe there should be a committee set up that could study this together.
Well, we've had a couple of those and, and, you know, quite frankly, we can't bind a future board. So, um, I think that is one of our responsibilities is to, you know, listen to the, to what the residents say, listen to what the, what the businesses say and listen to what the assessors tell us and then make our decision, so.
Just an opinion.
Yep. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Just looking at the comparable communities, we're still way below. I think it's a difficult question. Um, given the feedback, I'll make a motion to maintain the levy shift at 1.20, which translates to the town adopting a residential factor of 0.96374 for the fiscal tax year of 2024.
I think Frank wanted to.
Do you want me to read the right language?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will, I will vote aye also, so, well, as George suggested, we'll keep talking about this every year, I'm sure.
I agree with that.
And we still have others.
Yeah, you need other motions before we wrap this up. Okay, I didn't want you to move on.
So we currently have a small commercial exemption in the amount of 10%, correct?
Exactly right.
Uh, less, less than, a million dollars or less than 10 employees, right? 10 or less.
That's how it's defined, right?
That's how, exactly.
Yeah, we can't, we can't change that.
No, that part, just the percentage.
We can, we can change the percentage if we want. Does anybody want to change the percentage off the maximum allowed, which is 10%? I don't.
No.
You okay, Aaron?
Who sets those guidelines?
The state.
The state, for the number of employees also? Yeah, I don't like the number of employees myself, but.
They don't change them that often. That's the sad part is, is it's been a million dollars and 10 for years.
Yeah, I, I struggle with the 10 because I think there's some.
Well, we can't go higher.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
I will make a motion that we adopt a small commercial exemption in the amount of 10%.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the small commercial exemption. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we, we currently do not have a residential or an open space exemption. Does anyone wish to revisit that? If not, I will make a motion that we not adopt a residential or open space exemption.
Can I ask a question? What, what would that look like? What would a residential or, um, I'm sorry, it's in here, is it?
Yeah, it's in there.
That's okay, that's okay, Aaron. It's important you understand what you're voting on. Go ahead.
We don't do, we don't have one. We don't.
Probably 14 communities that have a residential exemption. First, we establish what an average residential value is, not single family, but overall. That's a $562,000, I think it was. And the, the driver is, um, they'd be owner occupied. And there'd be less than that. Any, any property that's less than that and owner occupied, we get a, um, an exemption, up to 35%, which would be, that burden would then be shifted to non-owner occupied or those properties that are valued greater than 562. So once again, like the other exemptions, it's shifting the burden around from, in this case, low-valued residential properties.
Think, think of like Cape Cod communities.
That's correct.
Vacation homes.
Seasonal communities.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not.
Way of providing a benefit to the residents.
Yeah.
And, and also I think the city of Boston also has.
That's correct.
Because there's a lot of investors who own residential properties but don't reside there. That's another way of providing relief.
Communities that have a large inventory of, um.
Not a huge impact here.
Not, not enough suburban community like Chelmsford, it's not, it's, you don't see it done, yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we did have, we did have a motion.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
And then the other thing is you, because this has to be submitted to the state, if you could sign this form on, below the green marker there, so that.
Just anywhere?
Yeah, anywhere down there. So that way it will get submitted along with the assessment certification and everything so that we can then get tax rate approval to get, have the bills issued before the end of this month. Thank you.
Hey, and while we're signing that, if you want to tell us about these regulatory agreements.
Sure. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in, in your packet, and why this is a free consideration this evening is, Town Council Paul Haverty has provided me, for your approval, the, the board's review of these regulatory and use agreements for two local initiative projects in the town of Chelmsford that were approved several, several years ago. One has to do with Carlisle Street and the other one has to do with 72 Dalton Road. And so basically, he wants, he wants the boards, you know, to be notified of this, that it, that it's moving forward towards the, uh, regulatory approval, I'm sorry, 73 Dalton Road. Uh, and then what, what will happen is, is I'll notify him tomorrow that, that this is okay. It'll again, submit it to the state for final review. And then he's informed me that I would sign the document in its final form after state review, um, uh, on behalf of the town. It has been reviewed by the, um, the property owner. And this is, you know, the standard initiative. And what this does, this then gets recorded at the registry of deeds and then that ensures the compliance with the approvals from the Board of Appeals to the local initiative process for the number of affordable units. And then also what it does is then, it then puts us to cement these units into our subsidized housing inventory. So basically, this is a regulatory procedural matter. But, um, council wanted the board to at least have a chance to review the documents prior to his issuing, submitting to the state.
And you sign it, right?
I will, I will eventually sign it. He, he's informed me that I, I will sign it on behalf of the town. But he wants the board's approval since it was a local initiative project that went through the select board at that time.
So, um, yeah, I just, I, I read through them. I mean, there's a lot of legalese in there, so I'm not sure I understood everything. But it, it sounds like, um, people that, um, want to apply for the, the low and moderate income apply directly to him and he's, and he basically.
Yeah, and our regulatory compliance agent is, is the Housing Authority, you know, David Haddison's group. So we have a monitoring agent.
Okay.
And that's how they, those, they ensure that the units are occupied by qualifying low-income individuals.
Okay, but, and, and do they apply to the Housing Authority or to the, uh, the, the owner?
The owner. And then, and then the town sort of.
Okay, then they make sure that they, that they doing it.
And, and David's been, the Housing Authority, Troy's been doing that for, he's decked, you know.
Does the state dictate that process? Is that the way that it?
Yeah, that's the process. You need a monitoring agent. That's how it works.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions about these two agreements? They seem very similar.
You want a motion?
Sure. Unless anybody has questions.
I mean, there isn't much for us to, to do here. It's all done, right?
It's all done by council.
It's all done by the CBA and, yeah, and council.
And it complies with the approvals from the.
Yeah, it's already been approved. It's, we're not approving anything, right? So.
I will make a motion to approve the regulatory and use agreements for 73 Dalton Road and Carlisle Street comprehensive permit projects, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, for what's a, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up is, um, the policy discussion. This is, uh, remember when we did our goals, one of the things that was brought up, I think I even brought it up, was, um, we've, uh, we periodically get requests for, uh, different monuments and memorials around town at parks, uh, buildings and things like that. And rather than have it just be haphazard on a case-by-case basis, I thought we should have some policy that says, you know, what we do and how we do it and what the process would be. I did not come up with this, this policy. I borrowed it from one of our neighboring communities and just amended it somewhat. And this is just a, you know, first run-through. I don't know if anybody has any questions, concerns, anything they like, but don't. I don't know if anybody has any questions, concerns, anything they like but don't like about it. So, I'll leave it at that. Anybody have thoughts?
I think it's a tough situ, I think it's tough.
George, you need to get closer to your microphone.
Sorry, you're right. I'm so soft-spoken.
Everybody says.
I know that. I, I mean, I, I think it's wonderful when you, you know, you honor people, but, you know, I mean, I think, I think you're gonna have to, I mean, where, where do you start? Where do you stop? I mean, it's just, it just, it's wide open, and it's gonna take a little bit of figuring. I mean, we've, I don't, I've been out here 15 years, and I don't know what, what have we done, one or two?
Well, I mean, we've done a few, I think. We, we did a few that, remember, we had the civic committee, and they brought forward a few things, like the naming of this room for Dennis Reddy.
What else was besides this?
We, we did, I was on a civic committee, so we planted a tree for Carol Cleven outside the school administration building. But this is more for like the Junie's Place thing, and the other one that we came up with, Sandy Rainey, when they, they wanted to do a garden or some kind of plaque or something. You know, I think it's, it's kind of in that regard too.
That includes that along with other.
I think it's wonderful, you do things for anybody that's done, but there's so many people in town here.
That's right.
You know, have done so much, and they're all gone now, and nobody even knows their name, you know what I'm saying?
That's, that's true in some regards, you're right.
So it's probably a good idea to maybe start, if you, but, you know, how do you, how do you do it? You know, and where do you stop? And what are the, you know, what are the-
But I think this draft kind of gives us the leeway to be able to pick and choose. It seems pretty, you know, there's not a lot of hard no's or yeses in here, which is probably good.
There's flexibility, but I, I think it is, it, it does kind of, you know, skew more towards the people like George is talking about, people that have done things for the community. And, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna, maybe to augment what George is saying, I don't know if this is what he was getting at, but there's a section that says the following guidelines must be addressed, and at the top of page two, paragraph B says "Community Value," and it's exp, I like, I mean, I like this, in general, I like the idea, the policy. It says it's expected to recognize an individual or event that has made a significant contribution or impact to Chelmsford or the Commonwealth. And I was just left with, is there anything, I don't, I don't even know the answer to my own question, but is there anything that helps make this less subjective? Because to your point, we get people coming in and saying they want something for a cause or maybe for somebody who was prominent in the community, how do you define what's significant for that person versus somebody else? So, I was just kind of struggling a little bit with that, and I, again, I don't know the answer to my own question, but how do you make it less suggestive? Right, is there-
I mean, the only one that arose, the notable one that arose in, in the last 15 years was Walter Hedlund. You remember, they dedicated the plaque on the common for Walter Hedlund, that exists today. And then, as Pat noted, the school committee planted the tree for Carol Cleven in front of the school administrative offices. But yet, in the same community that Bruce Freeman rail trail, you know, who was another state rep, but Carol Cleven got a tree. You know, so I don't know how the community made those decisions, but, you know, in Freeman Lake, he got a lake, trail.
He got a lot, he did, you're right.
She got a tree. I, I don't know.
I was in North Chelmsford either.
And even, and even if you look at the school buildings, half the school buildings, you know, Harrington School, you know, McCarthy School, and yet, you have Center School, South Row School, you know, Westlands, so there's, there, and none of that has changed in decades. So, I, I understand your question, Virginia, I struggle with it too, but I don't know if there is anything other than whoever's in the seating in the place at the time sort of considers what's brought before them.
Makes a judgment call on what significance is.
Yeah, makes a judgment call, yeah. So I, you know, because I, I wondered the same thing. You know, Barry Baylen got a sewer pump station, right?
Yeah, well, a couple of other people did too, I think George, I think they named-
And then we did the one for head, former police chief-
Houselander.
Houselander at the Old Town Hall in the parking lot. So there've been these periodic things, but they've, and then you're, then if you went before then, the only other big thing was major were the veterans' dedications, and those really were, you know, were done, you know, on a mass scale over the years, with Zabrick being the most recent one of note, and then some of the squares and signage. But I, I guess you're right, Virginia, it's, there really is no objective means of, well, who gets what, you know, and, and why do some things get done and not get done? You know, Dennis Reddy, this room is dedicated to Dennis Reddy, but there are select board members like Bill Dalton, who served a similar length of term, and I don't know how the community, not to compare the two, but I don't know how the community makes those judgments other than whoever's seating at the time does what it feels is appropriate.
Well, I mean, I, I guess there's, you know, there's a couple of questions that I had come up with after I submitted this, and one is, do we want to have some kind of form that, that, you know, people would submit about, you know, what they want and why they want it, and, you know, what the, the significance would be? And some of the other things that are, that are mentioned too, you know, like how it's going to be maintained, because some, you know, most of the things, like if it's, you know, this room, obviously, that's nothing, but, but there are some that, that maybe would require maintenance.
And, and currently, as we speak, the library's doing dedications in, in former director, Becky Herman's memory, and I think information just came out this week on that, where they're having a number of different components to that, so I think it's just sort of done on, as you said, but you're right, it might be some better way to codify it.
And, and I guess the question too would be-
Who can bring it forward?
Well, who can bring it forward, and like, something like that, is that the library trustees that have control over that, you know, or is it us?
Who's the authorizing?
Yeah.
Well, I, I had that question on your first sentence, like, what, what defines jurisdiction? Is it legal jurisdiction? Is it, because you've got Roberts Field already made decisions without-
Exactly.
They've already made, you know-
Conservation Commission does all the time.
Yeah. So, I, I wasn't sure whether jurisdiction had a deeper meaning, or if it was just kind of a, how do we decide what jurisdiction means?
Because I think they have the Bobby Greenwood wet reservation and so forth, Conservation does. So you're right, it's, it's tended in this town to follow through jurisdiction, you know, library trustees control the library properties, the school committee controls the school properties, Conservation does theirs. I mean, I'm not aware these have ever gone through town meeting, because that's another vehicle that is, that communities would do, is they would send it through town meeting vote.
And I, and I don't, I don't bring this up as an example to criticize or say one's better than the other, but, for example, Roberts Field made a decision to do Junie's Place, but then when somebody wanted to do something at Roberts Field for Sandy Rainey, it came in front of us. So what's the difference, like?
Well, I mean, that's why, right, and I think-
Is that their jurisdiction, or is it really ours?
Something like that, I, I think would be ours, quite frankly, I mean, I, I, you know, they don't really, well, I guess they do maintain, but-
They're an advisory committee, yeah.
BTW is the one that really maintains Roberts Field, for example.
So, so things that they've done previous to that should have come before us in hindsight, is kind of what you're feeling?
I think if we had a, yeah.
We had a policy, they would have come in front of us.
Because otherwise, you, you get things that maybe overlap, or maybe are conflicting.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, and it's, and, you know, I hate to say, but sometimes it comes down to, you know, who has the loudest voice, or, or maybe, you know, can do some kind of fundraiser so that they'll have the funds to, to create that. And I don't know that that should be the deciding factor. So do you have, do you want to-
Yeah, I mean, that's generally how it's been, is, is if somebody comes up with an idea like that, we, we ask them to bring it before the select board. Now, there's, as you know, there's an initiative to put a clock in North Chelmsford, and we've made it clear to the final square and the committee is, that's gonna come before the select board for approval, you just don't, you know, as much well as it's intended, you just don't land a clock there on town property. And you're right, I guess in hindsight, the Roberts Field thing could have probably been handled a little more formally, but yet, they did come on the Junie's Place thing.
Right, and, you know, and, and the, the other thing I was wondering is, you know, sometimes it's, it's awkward, like when the, the Sandy Rainey people came, I, I was, I was not totally comfortable saying, well, you have to, let's wait and see, you know, what this is gonna look like. Maybe we should have one person identified by, you know, on, on this board that would be like their first point of contact, so that they could talk to them first and kind of get a sense for what they wanted, and, and maybe kind of had a, have a feeling for, you know, what the board might be willing to go along with. I mean, I don't, you know-
So that we don't have to make the decision right then and there, within 20 seconds of hearing.
And I like the idea of a form because it, it gets everybody on, at least answering the same set of questions, not saying, I just want to come present something.
I think you should have a committee. I mean, you know, I just think you should have a committee, and maybe the only, maybe three-year terms or something like that, because-
Just for monuments and stuff like that?
Yeah, for, well, for any kind of-
So would it have to like go through the committee first, and then it would come to us?
I mean, everybody like to be, likes to be acknowledged, and, and everybody can't be acknowledged, and some people have done, got credit for things that they never did, and some people did a lot of things they never got credit for. So, it's never gonna be-
It's not gonna be totally fair.
A hundred, a hundred percent. Fair in everybody's eyes, you know what I'm saying? So, it's difficult, so I think-
George, that's an interesting idea, but like, who would be on the committee? Would you have representatives from Conservation and the library and the school department, or?
Yeah, I think you have to, you gotta, yeah, very diverse, because, I mean, you know, how many ti, I mean, people, some people have lived in this town for a hundred years, and other people have lived here for, you know, two years. And that doesn't make either one of them better or worse than the other one, it just, you know, sometimes, you know, you, you're more aware of what somebody has done, because you've been around longer and you've seen things, or you've been involved in the different organizations, and you've seen people who've really taken the reins and made things happen. And other times, other people slid in under somebody else's, you know, and it just happened because it was timing. And if somebody passes away, I mean, God, you know, you obviously don't mean this the wrong way, I mean, I mean, we have a lot, Barney Playground is, is that, I mean, Barney Playground is good.
Well, he donated-
It's made up to two different people.
But he gave the land, right?
Pardon?
Barney, Mr. Barney gave the land.
Dr. Barney donated the land, as he donated the library, I believe, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And, and, but people don't know that, they don't even know who Dr. Barney is. I mean, you know, but my father was in high school when they were clearing the land there. They'd get out of school to clear the land, get a day off so that the town could save the money on, you know what I mean? So, that's how I, that's what I mean, but, but Dr. Barney has been named, and Harry Ayer was named, he gave a lot up there, but there's, there's other people, if I can name five other people up there that have given a lot of years, a lot of time, and that's only one little place. And again, I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, I'm just trying to be fair to everybody, you know what I mean? I mean, yeah, everybody does pass sooner or later, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, I, sometimes I almost, I, I feel like in this, you know, when we had the civic committee, we tried to, we, we tried to recognize people before they passed. I mean, we did this, Dennis Reddy Meeting Room before he passed away, we did the Carol Cleven one before she passed, we did Walter Hedlund on the, on the common before he passed away, because I think it's more meaningful then, quite frankly, I mean, I, I don't think you want to say you have to be dead before you can be-
Well, Walter Hedlund was alive, right?
Yes, he was.
He was alive, we did, yeah.
But he was talking, anyway.
I mean, maybe, maybe that is a thought, maybe we, we should try to rejuvenate a committee like that.
Yeah, I think you, you know, make some kind of a plan where you do it within a certain period of time.
Well, in a committee that's tracking like new projects that are potential targets for dedications, or, yeah.
I mean, you get a lot of that, I mean, you get-
Yeah, and Angie Toronto snack bar.
Toronto Fieldhouse, they did the, right, they did the-
Yeah, or whatever it is, yeah.
Angie Toronto, that's right.
So, yeah, I mean-
And they were worthy of-
Yes, absolutely.
Never honor they detained, but-
You're sure.
There's a lot of other people that maybe-
That are too, right.
And, and there's some that maybe got it, had a friend, you know, who knows? I, I don't know, you know what I mean? But.
Yeah.
That's probably kind of a fun committee, actually.
It's a tough one, I think it's a tough one, that's what I wanted to say.
If you've been in town for a long time, I'm sure there would be people that would be, that would be willing to do that, you know? That would be inter, that, it's interesting.
Or if you give a lot of money.
Yeah, that never hurts.
All in.
I, I had one other comment, if this, some form of this language survives. The last paragraph, it says the town of Chelmsford at its sole discretion may move, remove, modify. I think we should add a statement in there that the town will make every effort to coordinate with either the donor or the custodians of the memorial before taking action.
Sure, yeah.
Because I think we've misstepped a couple times, so.
Oh, okay.
Once.
Okay. I mean, I, I could take another shot at it then, maybe try to come up with a form, and maybe some thoughts on a, a committee, what a committee would look like, and what their charge would be.
Try to get a diverse group, like, you know, from different eras maybe as well, you know, I'm not talking of going back a hundred years.
So we're gonna, we're gonna check their IDs to see how old they are?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, you get somebody from the, you know, the 50s, or the 60s, or the 80s, or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, high school kids.
I mean, if they haven't been recognized from the 50s, I don't think they're ever gonna be recognized, unfortunately, but who knows? I mean, there are a lot of people that did a lot of things for people. I mean, like when I was in school, I'm, I know I'm an old timer, so, you know what I mean? But, a lot of people donated a lot of things and gave a lot up for kids, and started a lot of the youth, which have now become big, but without them starting it out and giving money out of their own pocket and going out and collecting the 10s and the 20s, and believe me, I have saw it, I saw it with people, you know what I mean? And I mean, it's, it's all in here, so it's from the heart, you know what I mean?
All right, so, I'll work on that and try to bring it back out at our next meeting and have further discussion.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, thanks. All right, Tommy Andrew reports.
Yeah, real briefly, Madam Chair, I just wanted to formally inform the, the board and the, and the community, the town has completed the closing on the Coolest Farm property that was recorded last Wednesday, November 29th. The, you know, I want to thank council and Finance Director John Susan, everyone else who contributed to working to bring this to complete closing. We'll, we'll be, later on this evening, I'll be asking for the appointment of a task force to receive community input on the use of the site. I have pursued, as I indicated I would at the last meeting, I've submitted an application to the building commissioner for demolition delay, just so that process can get initiated. It doesn't compel us, as I said at the last meeting, but at least it would expedite that process when it were to occur. I've also moved forward with the, having wetlands flagged on the property, so that way it'll clearly be known what the environmental sensitivity areas and buffer zones are on the property to help with the planning and use of the property. There, there is still some, you know, materials on the site that have to be removed, I'll be working with TBW Director Christine Clancy to move that along in the weeks and months ahead. And then with the task force, I think the, the hope and goal would be that next spring, and we leave the winter weather, that the site, you know, can move forward, you know, to a productive community use. And also, I'll, after the committee decides its input, we'll also work, as we have with the Warren Pole property, to put a required restriction on the property and proper signage and so forth, so. So I just wanted to formally notify the community that that has moved forward. So, so I just wanted to formally notify the community that that has moved forward.
So speaking of signs, are they gonna take down the for sale signs?
Yes, I spoke to the broker today, uh, because I was out there last week and he, he basically said they don't want the signs back. So I, I was hesitant to just, you know, remove them and destroy them, but he indicated that they do not want the signs back.
Can you even take them out?
Oh, yeah, they're not, they're not cemented in, they're not cemented. I was out there. Yeah, so they will be removed, uh, within a matter of days, if, if not sooner. Because I, I was out there, but I couldn't do it by myself. You just have to just take it out and lay it down, but you need a couple of people, so that, that will happen, but they're not cemented in. And then the other thing is, speaking of community preservation, uh, the town accountant has informed us that the town did receive its state annual distribution from the Community Preservation Trust Fund. And the town, this fiscal year received $295,472, which is a 21.02% match of the town's, uh, community preservation surcharge.
So, so it's not consistent across?
No, and, and what, no, because it, it, what, it depends upon which level, it's a matching level. And, and Chelmsford is a one and a half percent match and, and some communities have chosen to do the three percent full match. So it, it does vary by community. So that's my report for this evening. I do have a request for confirmation of a bid award, and this was for the fire department mechanical plow slash service truck. And a formal bid process occurred here. The qualified and selected bidder was Weir's Motor Sales Incorporated and the bid price is $62,485. That's for, for the, uh, for the, uh, fire department mechanic plow and service truck.
Okay, any questions about that bid?
I will make a motion to approve the town manager bid award for the fire mechanic pickup truck to Weir's Motor Sales Incorporated, the amount of $62,485 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up is our appointments for the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. Thanks to you who have stayed through this meeting.
I, I, I think, I think you had a good recommendation, uh, of an idea, and I think we have, uh, talked, I mean, we were just talking earlier.
Sure, yeah.
Well, people are out here waiting and it, obviously they have, you know, an interest, a real interest. And we were, we were trying to appoint two, but we had like four, four applicants.
Actually, five now.
Five now, but, so, many times we just, to get more people involved in the town and so, we just will bring, make them all a member. It's just, just a thought.
Yeah, I, I think five would be a little too many. That would, what, how big would that make the committee?
Let me, let me ask you a question, Paul. So is the Housing Advisory Board receptive to assigning someone or do we not know?
I haven't heard back, as I.
George is a member.
George is on the Housing Advisory Board.
How about, how about the school committee?
I've not heard from the school committee. I would hope the school committee would be active in this initiative.
So. I was waiting to hear kind of what other people thought, but I could.
More people at large than, I mean, if they're already sitting on committees, you know?
This, this was, this was my thinking, was that, um, when I, I mean, we don't even know if we'll fill all the spots. There's still a couple blank here, but once the committee recommends a facilitator, that person is going to be doing a lot of the, um, work product development by getting inputs from this committee, the community and other places. And I think this is going to be a little bit of a longer term lift. And it seems like with every new committee we assign, we always wind up with some attrition at the outset. And when I looked at that, the applicants that were submitted on time, I mean, Erin was pivotal when we, pivotal in the development of the values, mission and vision statement, which is kind of like the beginning stages of this. Sheila's been involved in the town for a long, long time and has a lot of experience to bring, to bear there. Kristen, Kristen, um, is kind of like the people we've been trying to reach to get new, new blood engaged and has, has a lot of relevant background. And, you know, Charles also has become active within the last year, but, so I think that's another demographic we're trying to make and brings a lot of, um, professional background to the table in that area. So I was just kind of kicking around that I don't know that having the four that submitted on time, if there's a huge downside, um, that would bring it to 11, assuming the Housing Advisory Board even, um, assigned somebody. I'm not sure where the school committee stands on this or if they just want to do their own process. But it just, it didn't seem like an unreasonable number if you have an outside facilitator coming into really, part of, part of what you're doing is gathering the different perspectives, right? It's not like a committee that's creating the output. It's a committee where members of the steering committee are almost creating the input and then.
So the more perspective, the better.
The guidance of the output as it's created from the facilitator. So I, I don't know, I, I'll stop talking now, but I was just thinking, I, I don't know if there's really a downside, given the strength and the different, the diversity of background that those four applicants have. Just putting them all on it.
I, I know, one of the issues that a couple of committees have had recently is when we did something like that, because of schedules, um, it was a lot harder to get a quorum. So, I mean, that's, I mean.
Well, they're probably gonna come up with a regular schedule of some sort, right? So, yeah, they might lose somebody. They might decide that their schedule is the first Tuesday of every month.
Right, well, that's, that's what I mean. There's always a natural attrition that happens when we put a new committee in place. And, you know, maybe we say that ideally we want to keep it at two residents, right? So if we, if we have attrition below that, then we appoint somebody else. But if we have natural attrition.
Yeah, you might end up with two.
We just let it ride and we, and then we're not going through the whole application process again.
George, any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I, I think it's a good idea. I know we've done that many times.
We have.
And I, and I think the more people, we're always saying, let's get new people involved, new people involved. And I mean, we got a chance to do that, I wouldn't want to pass up the opportunity, so.
It just seemed like such a good blend of long-term experience with the town with newer, between the four.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to definitely give it a try and then if we find out that it's unwieldy or whatever, we can come back and revisit it.
We can call it down or if the committee, yeah, if they say it's not manageable.
If that's the.
Paul, you're smiling.
Oh, no.
Is that because they're vacuuming?
Because they're vacuuming, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Erin, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. And I don't know, what, so what do we do about the Housing Advisory Board and the school committee?
I'll reach out to them again.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna reach out to the school committee and the liaison and ask them.
And it may be if they don't want to assign a permanent member, they're ones that we bring in.
Right.
You know, as we bring in other boards and committees in the process, they, maybe they're, they come in.
Just periodically?
Right, as, instead of as a full steering committee member, if they can't support that.
Well, yeah, and if they can't support that, or they haven't signed anybody up yet, then it'll be good to have the extra.
Yeah.
Members from the community, so.
More hands can make light work.
There you go.
If you do it right.
Yeah.
Or it can be a disaster.
All right, so do you want a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint Erin Cunningham, Charles Mooney, Kristen Morris and Sheila Pichette as resident members to the Strategic Plan Steering Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we're a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, all three of you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we'll hear about the task force.
Yeah, sort of a similar thing happened here. If you remember, when I came in before you, I, I envisioned a five-person committee with one neighborhood resident and one Chelmsford resident. I ended up receiving seven applications in total, of which probably two were what you'd call neighborhood residents, because it's, how do you define neighborhood? But then Chelmsford residents, they were, they were, you know, five, so there were seven. So I, I sort of, I didn't think I wanted to add all seven, because it would have been.
There would have been.
It would have been 10 for a task force. So I ended up basically choosing two, uh, neighborhood residents, which were pretty straightforward, because, you know, one literally lived a few lots down, um, on Pine Hill Road at 223, and then, um, over at Cantor Road. And then from the others, I then took, I basically chose two out of the five. And again, it was the idea of bringing in people who hadn't been involved before and also who sort of brought a skill set, as you saw in their application. So I, I sort of felt, struggled, just like you did, about leaving anybody out. So what I, I did hang on to the three other applications and my thought would be to, that I would reach out to them tomorrow, thank them and encourage them to be part of the process, even if they aren't formally on the committee. So I'm seeking your, uh, confirmation this evening of the following seven individuals for the Coolest Farm Task Force. The Agricultural Commission, Mike Raisbeck, um, Chelmsford Open Face Steward, it'd be Phil Stanway, Conservation Commission, John Swenson. So again, those were sent by those committees. And then for the neighborhood residents, it'd be Sue Aubendorf of 1 Cantor Road and John Ray of 223 Pine Hill Road. And then the following two Chelmsford residents, Michael Shudzinski of 9 Chestnut Hill Road and James Dowd II of 309 Pine Hill Road.
So, so Paul, I see that you, for a term ending June 30th, is that gonna be long enough?
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah. This is a task force, this is not a standing committee.
All right.
And my sense is they, they, after the holidays, the beginning of the year, get the word, I'll get the input. And then my sense is, is I'm, I'm hopeful that by, you know, March or April, that they will have a, a vision of where we want to go. And that's, it really is to get input and to, and to ideas. And if you recall, the one for the Warren Pole property was rather quick as well. That was not a prolonged effort. I mean, there, there was, we, we gathered people, I know it was during the pandemic, but we gathered input and then we, we, you know, we came to this board and then we thanked them and then, and then implemented it, um, through the Conservation Commission. So, and I think really that, anyway, I think that, that will probably, I expect will take place. My goal would be, as I said earlier, have the property cleaned and have the task force direction by, you know, the spring. And then hopefully we can then move towards, um, you know, using the property. Because I, Donna Coole has brought to me last week a couple of photos, historic photos of the property, and it's quite taking when it, when it was cleared and you didn't have the growth and all the stuff on the property. It's a very beautiful, um, property on, um, and so again, I, hopefully this task force can, you know, basically solicit input and, and, um, consider the different considerations, which I think are, you know, for, for the, uh, two main parcels on Pine Hill Road, because I think the other two are, you know, no brainers. And then, and then come back and if they do need more time, we can, you know, I can come back and extend it. But I'm, I'm hopeful that by spring, that there'll be a clear direction, um, and, um, you know, go from there. And, and I expect and hope that the Coolest family may send reps to the meetings as well, to hear their input, so.
Okay, all right.
I will make a motion to approve the town manager's appointment of the Coolest Farm Task Force members for the term ending June 30th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two, uh, select board member liaison reports and referrals. George, anything?
No, I, I, you know, the Yale RTA, which I, uh, I'd like to see people try to utilize it once, at least once and see the benefits that it has. Put a lot of effort in and they, you know, and they do a great job and save a, from a lot of.
Even if you just go for a ride, right?
Oh, yeah, Charlie and the MPTA.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, Erin?
The next capital planning meeting is this Thursday on December 7th, and that's going to be at the town adminis, the school administration offices. The Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee hosted Saturday's holiday celebration and tree lighting in Vinyl Square. They had over 300 people turn out and wanted to thank the community for that. And I wanted to thank the committee and the volunteers that put that together, because it was not trivial. And then from the Conservation Commission, I've got two things. One, that the Cranberry Bog parking lot has been expanded and, um, they thank the DPW for helping them get that extra parking space. And visitors are reminded to not park on the street, uh, when they go to the Cranberry Bog. And then the second is, um, kind of a late-breaking update that they have reached what they believe to be the final Warren Pole conservation restriction and they expect to get approvals next week from the land trust and the Conservation Commission, and then it would be brought to the select board at our next meeting in December.
Okay, good. Okay, I have a couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, Josh Abbott, who is a, a local firefighter, who received the citation for meritorious conduct at the Firefighter of the Year Awards in, um, in Worcester. The governor presented that award to him. You probably remember this, uh, this event that happened, I believe it was in July, was it July? When he was driving in New Hampshire and saw a car go off the side of the road. And he and another off-duty firefighter rescued a woman just before the car blew up. So, um, congratulations for Josh and good work to Josh. There was a ribbon cutting last week at Nana's Playroom, which is up in Vinyl Square. This, they, uh, cater to children from age zero to four. And they have in a special, um, family introductory rate where you can bring as many kids as you want for all one rate. I don't know what that rate is, so.
They're too old.
Oh, well. And the Veterans Park, the, um, Veterans Memorial Park Committee wanted me to announce that they are starting to get names for new stones to put into the, into the park. And right now, there's, as you know, there's thousands of names there. And they want to get enough names to fill two small stones, which would be about 140 or so names. So if you know any, any veterans that have a connection to town, Regina Jackson at the Veterans Office does have an application. They, you know, obviously want to try to do this for, um, either Memorial Day next year or Veterans Day. So get your names in and, um, it's, you know, it's quite an honor to have your name on that, on, on those stones. So, uh, they are looking for that right now. So that's all I have for now. A reminder that we do have our tri board meeting a week from today on the 11th with the school committee and finance committee. So we'll see everybody then.
At 7:30 or is that a seven, is that a 7:30?
That's a six.
That's a six.
Six, me, is it a six?
That's six o'clock, yeah.
That's why I asked, I didn't.
Yeah, you'd come and we'd be, we'd be done.
I didn't give a minute.
Well.
All right.
Thank you.
It is 7:25 and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.